All this meeting is ordered. Please silence your electronic devices so we can get back to our business and stand for the next question given by councilmember Smith.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is heaven. Give us a day in our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses; we forgive those who trespass against us; we design temptation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium over there. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first file, that means you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up because on the second file, we'll have to stop.
Peggy Jensen?
Hi, I would like to pick up on a point that was made previously, the last council meeting. This is my hometown, but I left when I was 17. Didn't expect to come back, but changes in the family brought me back. I lived in the historic district of East Avenue in Rochester. I've lived in Brighton, Pittsford, Fairport, and West Aranacoyt. So when you talk about aging infrastructure, things that are needed, I understand. I would like to agree with the city manager about contracts to appoint. I believe your fire chief, your head of police need vehicles to respond quickly. I strongly disagree that a school resource officer can have a vehicle, can live in Akron, New York, in Erie County. In 2008, in the fall of 2008, the city of Rochester passed a referendum. You must live in the city of Rochester in order to work for the city. I've negotiated contracts and leases for 40 years, so I believe I know what I'm talking about. Contracts can be negotiated line by line. And now my water bill is under attack. I've been disappointed by things that have happened in Batavia. The first thing that happened when I came back here was no longer would I have trash under the city of Batavia. It would be a private contractor. My credit for that did not meet what my vendor charged me. And then taking my refuse to the refuse dump in my private vehicle. Why is there someone there guarding the refuse dump? Are you afraid there'd be bags left behind, trash dumped? This is a person that could be used in some other way, I think, to support the city. So I would like to see a better coordination with the county of Genesee, city of Batavia, and the school board. One of the other things that happened was the school in my neighborhood closed. Now it's reopened. I don't understand this dynamic at all. Very dismayed by it. You have a wonderful little city. You have so much to work with in terms of history and resources, and I would really love to see it manifested far more. Coming into Batavia, I think, is an embarrassment. You do not have any attractive entrances to this city. If you work with the county, maybe some other entities, you could do more. So I would make a resolution that you consider that employees that work for the city of Batavia have to live here. The city of Batavia residents are paying those salaries, and they should be here. Thank you.
Sammy Salvo?
Hey, everybody. It's Sammy. I live in Walnut Street, Batavia. So two weeks ago, there was a group of citizens that held a meeting to discuss some general concerns related to the city, mostly prompted by this budget talk that is happening in the vote tonight, particularly the addition of 12 new positions, the proposed new tax that didn't go through, a bunch of other things. Some comments have been said about the meeting already, so I'm going to actually talk about larger themes that I pulled out of the meeting as opposed to specifics of the meeting. But I am going to start with specifics quick to give some context. General things that were said at the citizens' meeting were better paying jobs in the city. The dirty medians in the city are via bedroom community. Taxpayers are not the number one concern anymore. The city should sell the properties they own, particularly in the mall, and stop investing in the mall. We are not Buffalo and Rochester and should stop pretending to be that. The older population in the city have fixed incomes and can't move and can't do new things. And we used to hear a lot, let's think of the taxpayer, and we don't hear that as much anymore. And do not go after nonprofits. So I'm going to talk about the four kind of larger themes that I noticed from this meeting that I think kind of encompassed a lot of things. So the first common thread was the question of Batavia's direction. So we hear everybody talk about how we're similar to Buffalo and Rochester, but we have a relatively stable and small population. And the truth is that we're not those two cities. We're a small town, and we should act like a small town. So my question is, what do you all think Batavia's direction is? There's a strategic plan page and a comprehensive plan page on our website, neither of which appear to have been updated since 2017 except for one 2324 strategic plan PDF. So all that documentation is at least seven, eight years old. So whatever direction you all want is not recently updated and is not available for us to read, and that's a lack of transparency, which is another point I will talk about. You have cities like Oswego that have laid out very solid plans, such as when they were going to redo a bunch of roads, they gave every future year for the next five years a different color on a map, and they mapped out what color streets or which streets by which color for year were going to be redone. It was transparent. It was a solid plan. It was a goal, which is a little more than we see now. North Tonawanda has supported their farmers market to such an extent that their market is now voted one of the best in the nation. So it feels like much of our current strategic plan are loose timeframes and wishes. I know that commitment is difficult because when you miss deadlines, people hold you accountable, and that really sucks. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still set deadlines and be a little more solid with what we want to do. Our website also says that citizens were polled in 2007. I was not of voting age at that point, and that poll was about the city's direction and what citizens wanted for the city, and this website doesn't say that it's happened since then. So maybe it's time that we do that again so that citizens decide what direction we go rather than city officials saying this is what we want the city to do. The second common thread was a lack of transparency. In regards to the budget, I know the budget has been out there, but it is dense and time-consuming for most people to read. My time is consumed by working on my doctorate while working full-time. Other people have families, multiple jobs, other commitments, et cetera. They can't review a full budget, go through everything, gather thoughts, come up here and speak. And I think what people want was just more reasoning for the tax increases, where this money was going, why decisions were made, more than what was given. And I know a lot was given, but again, it was very dense and it wasn't easily accessible to most people. And transparency is much more than saying it's on the website where the document exists, go read it. Transparency is doing a lot more than that. The third common thread is communication seems to be lacking. There were at least four past committees represented at the citizens' meeting, and they all said that after they gave council their thoughts, they were ignored. Other people have said that they don't trust council to give honest responses to concerns. Others said they don't see the point of communicating in this capacity because what will actually change, et cetera. And it really just felt like people were upset at a lack of grassroots communication between city officials and citizens, which is really what you all are here for, including the manager. We need to do something about this. And the fourth was that you guys don't always feel like you're necessarily humanized with what the other taxpayers are feeling, and I think that kind of ties into the communication piece. Standing up here is not dialogue. Standing up here is a line of people that say one thing, you guys say something, the news reports it, people on Facebook comment about it, and then we go sit down and there's no more happening. That's not dialogue. There used to be meetings for citizens to talk at, for you guys to talk to us at. That's not happening really anymore. There may be behind closed doors conversations, but that is it. I say all this so that you guys can hear common themes, and I hope that you guys will reflect on these themes and you guys will say, I hear these concerns, I hear that these things are issues. Whether I think it's true or not, we do something about this so that stuff can change. Thank you.
John Rose?
John Rose, Grandview Terrace. One question I had is, I believe we have two or three properties in the mall that the city owns because of taxes, not counting the new theater. Do we have a timeline where if nobody comes forward and says, I'll pay X amount of money for the property, that we put it out for bid and get from under it? I think we've owned some of those properties for a good number of years. The other one is, the last meeting, I mentioned that at least two council members have said they intended to vote against the budget if there was any tax increase whatsoever, but I have a heck of a hard time finding out what they would cut to keep it flat. Unless it's as grandstanding to say, I'm going to vote no, maybe tonight they could tell us what they would have cut to get it to be a flat tax rate. Thank you.
Any comments from council? Rachel, did you want to speak on the refuse dump question while we have somebody there? Maybe you can clear up a couple of these questions?
Sure, let me start with strategic plan. Page 44 of the budget book has the strategic priorities every single year in it. We certainly can post those separately so they're more easily accessible.
And one thing, Rachel, we are aware our webpage is way out of date, right? Correct? We're working on getting that cleaned up. I mean, that's, we have other priorities that was not one of our top ones because we just didn't have the people, but we're working on that as well. Just go ahead, continue.
Yeah, that is inside the strategic priority list of things we have. Also, the 2017 comprehensive plan was put into place right before COVID. We're still operating on that 2017 comprehensive plan, which was a citizen engagement and planning board engagement committee. As for the staffing of the refuse, we absolutely do need someone there to make sure there's no illegal trash dumping at the site. If there were illegal trash dumping, it would then cost taxpayers more to have to clean up that. So if we're talking about leaves and debris and sticks that we take out to the yard waste station, we do always want to have a monitor there during the times it is open.
And we've had tractor trailers come up with professional tree cutting clippings and trying to dump them there, and that's just not what it's for. It's for the people who live here, not people who are driving in from other communities to dump their professional trimmings in our area. So that was one of the other reasons. Go ahead, continue.
That's all.
What about the resource officer and living inside the city? Didn't we do that with department heads and we realized that we couldn't get residency? So we drew up a line around the city within a certain geographic area that would allow them to live within a reasonably close distance to drive in, but not too far to be like not available for emergency callouts and so.
Currently, council has approved the residency requirements of living in Genesee County and/or the surrounding towns immediately surrounding Genesee County. So Riga would be a surrounding town. Holly, Barry, Medina, Shelby, Akron. That is what council approved. I was not here when that was approved, but we have operated that way since I have been here, and that is a council action and council decision. I believe Rochester is actually changing the residency requirements, especially for their police because they're having a very difficult time finding qualified officers.
And that was our problem as well. We just couldn't get staffing that, you know, eventually, most people who work here do move into close by, but originally, they wouldn't have qualified to even apply because they didn't live here. So we were having a hard time filling slots, so we had to expand it out. And then it seems to have worked pretty good for us because it's doing all right, so.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I think we approved surrounding, adjoining counties, not towns.
No, no. We originally, and it was cut back to a so many mile radius from the center of the city.
Just towns, no radius.
Yeah, well, I knew it was like closer than, because originally, we did approve full counties like Erie, but it had to be a little closer than that. So I knew there was talk about that. We did bring it in a little bit, but. What about transparency, other than we post what we can post? Meetings are all covered. We're all available. We all have our phones listed, and we can easily be contacted for any questions, clarifications, concerns. I like the idea of the entrance ways being dressed up, but again, that costs money, and we're on a really tight budget, and we're just right now paying for basic services. I don't see any fat in this budget. I see basically police, fire, public works. We added additional firefighter. We added a unfrozen police position. We added an additional police officer to work our net teams to improve neighborhood issues in various parts of the city when they pop up. So now we have dedicated people to do that where before, we had no staffing for that.
We do have two positions that we requested council to look at in this year's budget, a full-time public communications web design employee in social media, cost $60,000, and a full-time IT employee. Again, that would help with our IT needs and website needs. Those positions were not taken up by council to be added at this time.
We were already at 10 seconds per thousand increase, so we want to keep it tight. Anybody else want to?
Well, I'd like to add, we can do anything you want. Some people, they want bare bones, they can't afford it. Other people want more services. So again, we're back to we can put anything you want. We can do all these things people want. It's got to be paid for somewhere. We try to have a responsible budget. We have a sound budget. We have a responsible budget, and we can only work in the framework that we allow. Now, as council people, we set the budget, not the city manager. She advises us. She gives us different options. So in the end, we set the budget. Not only we set the budget, it's right in our charter. We took an oath to uphold the laws of the federal government, United States, the state of New York, and most importantly, the Batavia city chairman, which we hold to. Now, there's now one member here that would aggregate. They're not going to give that up. We give reasons why we vote for it, and we should give reasons why we're not voting for it. So I'd like to hear why we wouldn't vote for this budget, particularly one we went line by line, and two of us went line by line twice.
Okay, anyone else?
Yard waste, I have been there. Rachel, when there's been problems with people who come in, they didn't even know who they were. They were commercial haulers, and that's something I think we probably need to address that.
It's a double-edged sword because, as Scott will explain, some of the commercial haulers bring in hardwood, which then makes the ability for the companies that come and take the wood to turn into mulch more valuable. So it's a delicate balance, and Scott, I'll let you explain that a little more.
Well, we do have, we do have to pay to have everything ground, Nick. That's a cost.
Correct.
And, yeah. I was there one day, and a guy just left, and I stopped and talked to our people there. Guy says, I think I just came all the way from Hamline. I heard you had a pretty nice place here, and I have nowhere to take it. So it is for city residents, and with the cost of grinding going up and everything, I think we need to maybe come up with a way to charge people, just decline them. Just a thought.
And just to jump on the water issue that you talked about, we've seen, can you tell us how much like lime and chemicals and slug removal? Can you tell me how many percent increase we've received on those?
Yeah, we just opened chemical bids last week, and how high did we go up from last year?
Was it lime that went up $100, I believe?
Yeah, so I mean, those chemicals continue every year. That's awful.
So what were they approximately before that?
I didn't have to pull that resolution what the cost was, but.
Because I remember they went up like almost 100%.
Correct.
And the cost of transport that here went up astronomically, and to clean out the slug, these are all maintenance things that have to be done.
Yeah, and the chemicals at the wastewater facility are the same way. Every single time these are going up to bid, it's an exponential increase in cost for those chemicals.
So we're at the mercy of paying higher prices, and the water reserves and the water fund has increases built into it to adjust for various improvements and things, but not at that level. Not at that level.
And we don't have a choice. We have to have the council.
Yes.
There's no advantage or loss on that.
So we've looked at this in many different ways, and if there was other ways to cut those costs and not raise them, we would, but we're at the mercy of that inflationary increase, and we have to, we have to have that. So at this time, I think we were benefited because there were several or more than one company bidding, because in the past, we didn't even get bids, and people didn't even want to do business. So now we're at least getting some competition. Hopefully, that's going to stabilize this a little bit.
Correct, and our office did a lot of due diligence, and now give a lot of credit to Warner Donovan, who's our administrative assistant, reaching out and revamping the whole bidding process in order to get more bidders for all of our chemicals, so.
And we've had to do it on several projects because we go back and rebid because we weren't going to pay the inflationary costs, and we had to make sure it was going to be within our budget and within reason.
Correct.
And the city's not going to be able to meet the federal government's mandate of replacing every lead line of $30 million without asking and requesting through the water rate some capital improvement fees. So typical city water and sewer bill combined annually for a household with four residents is $149 per quarter. That's sewer and water, or about $596 annually. So I still think compared to other municipalities who are still able to offer your sewer and your water services at a reasonable fee, why we try to make improvements, capital improvements of your water infrastructure and chase down every grant we can find to offset that on behalf of the residents.
So there. Okay. Communications.
Golar submitted their application for steel band festival on Saturday, April 13. This would be to 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the city center concourse.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, next one.
Ever Present Church submitted their application for a worship concert on Friday, April 26, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the concourse outside of the church.
Any questions on that?
The Genesee Country Farmers Market submitted their application for outdoor market. This would be every Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, June 7 through November 1, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Bink Street Mall parking lot.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have one. I noticed that they said that they would have alcohol available. Do we need to pass a waiver on that?
No, so they have it through the New York State IAX and Market Farms Law, that each vendors that want to carry alcohol are licensed through that provision. It has nothing to do with the city applications.
And for tasting only and then sale?
I didn't say licensing or anything. It's just, does that violate our ordinance with open?
No, because it's sale. It's sale of like meat, cider lines.
It was a little confusing. I read that myself, and I wasn't sure how they were.
I think every year, we do the same thing.
He said yes, but no. I didn't understand it. All right, next, go ahead.
The Batavia Business Improvement District submitted their application for the Jackson Square concerts. This would be Fridays, June 12 is actually through August 30, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Jackson Square, just on Fridays.
Okay, any questions on that?
They also submitted an application for live band music on Saturdays from July 13 through August 17, and this would be 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Jackson Square.
Any questions on that? All right.
Living Waters submitted their application for community outreach on Sunday, July 28, 10:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This would be in Austin Park.
Any questions? Continue.
And the last is O'Leary submitted a liquor license application, and there were no objections from the police department.
Any questions on that?
Council president, if I might, just a reminder that this is for informational purposes only for council. Council's not acting on it, so to the extent this may involve a business of a certain council member, there's no vote being taken, and there's no action being taken.
We're at a council meeting.
Well, no, but even still, the city doesn't act on liquor applications. It's an informational way.
Right, it goes through the state liquor authority, and we're just being notified. Unless we had police or some kind of other extenuating, but that's not the case.
Yeah, there's no action being taken, but.
Right. Okay. Next city council business meeting we held Monday, March 11, 2024, 7:00 p.m. City Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, I received an email from NICOM requesting that we sign on to a letter to the governor for additional AIM funding. Rachel, you asked if that would be put on this agenda. Rachel, you looked into that? Did you have any additional information you want to add to it?
Yeah, and we talk about AIM funding every year. We continually advocate with NICOM on an increase in AIM funding. It has not changed or increased in over 15 years. The city shares $1.75 million annually, which is less than one-eighth of the public safety budget combined with police and fire. So again, it's something that NICOM continually advocates for an increase on, and I'd recommend that council support the letter.
So is it something we're going to move to a business meeting, or is it something we can decide to do tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I think you need to because I think the letter goes out.
Do we take a show of hands, or do we just consensus? Or how do we do this? George?
Well, I mean, the letter's not necessarily a resolution. It's merely a letter and support. So it's basically a consensus of council that you'd ask the city manager to sign off and submit this. It's not a formal action through a resolution per se.
We did do a resolution, sorry.
So if that's the case, it would almost have to be moved to a business meeting? I'm not so sure that.
The timing's just not going to work.
I think the letter in and of itself is probably the way to go.
Yeah.
If it's better urgency because it doesn't fit with the.
At one point, I think I got an email just asking me to check a box, are you signing on or not?
Right, it's a letter and support on behalf.
Then I check it, and then add our name to this letter that's going in as a, right?
Yeah, there've been other letters in support or in opposition that's basically a standard procedure.
Right.
So I think a resolution probably isn't necessary.
Right, that's kind of what I thought. It was just more of a general consensus that we'd like to do that as a council to sign on with the other municipalities to try to get AIM funding increased across the state for all of us. That's what I'm asking for at this point. I'd like to submit our name for that. If you guys are all in favor of that, we can do that.
Yes.
We'll take care of that. I have a proclamation. For Daniel Coffey, now ladies and civilians. Stand up here, sergeant. It's a long one. He had a very historic career. We have this proclamation for Sergeant Coffey, just retired, and I had the pleasure of working with him, and we're missing, we're losing an awesome guy who needs retirement. The college is gaining an awesome officer. So whereas Dan Coffey has retired as a police sergeant from the city of Batavia Police Department on January 5, 2024, after 20 years of service, whereas Dan began his career with the city of Batavia Police Department on October 5, 2003, as a police officer. He is a lifelong resident of Batavia, having grown up in the city. Dan graduated from Notre Dame High School, subsequently went on to Genesee Community College where he obtained his associate's degree. He then attended SUNY Broadport where he obtained a bachelor's degree, majoring in criminal justice. Prior to employment by the city of Batavia, Dan was an emergency services dispatcher for Genesee County and manager at a local restaurant. Dan had served as past chief for the town of Batavia Fire Department and still volunteers to this day. Whereas Dan has distinguished himself during his career as a police officer, field training officer, general obstacle instructor, lead firearms instructor, and has served on the department's emergency response team. He was promoted to sergeant in June of 2012 and soon thereafter took command of the first platoon. Dan was in charge of the department's fleet of vehicles, and he was integral in the day-to-day operations of the department as he took on many projects. Whereas Dan has served his community and the department with passion and dedication. He has been recognized by the public. He's served with many appreciation letters and positive comments. Dan is a past recipient of the Kiwanis Club Criminal Justice Award and has received other department awards. He has distinguished himself as a leader, mentor within the police department and the city of Batavia. Now therefore, in true spirit of appreciation for 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Batavia, city council of the city of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Daniel J. Coffey for his dedicated service to our community and to wish him well in your return.
Thank you very much for the sentiment. I really do appreciate it. I just, it was a good career. I enjoyed working for the city of Batavia, and it really does mean a lot to me that my service is recognized. I really do appreciate all the. I really do appreciate all the people here. Thank you, Daniel.
Public hearings. Tonight we have two public hearings. I did a motion to open the first one in reference to budget ordinance zero-one dash twenty twenty-four. Mr. Viakowski. And the second, Mr. Richmond. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Viakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, can I, we normally have a discussion after a second of this discussion, but can I bring something up at this time?
Not usually in a public hearing. We just open it and close it. I don't know if we really discuss opening a public hearing. Because you can only discuss the actual opening of the public hearing or not opening of the public hearing.
Well, if there's matters related to, certainly discussed within the context of that.
Right, but we have to vote on it and open the public hearing first, right?
Correct.
So do you wanna speak before we open the public hearing or during the public hearing?
I can speak during the public hearing. I just wanna clarify something.
Okay.
Okay, there's a lot of discussion about the budget and concerns taxpayers have, but I just wanna clear some statements that were made at the last meeting. Fellow council members stated that when attending the Audit Advisory Committee meetings, I approved everything on the budget, and we voted for the same law. I wanna clarify, the Audit Advisory Committee, the Audit Committee, reviewed the, the last meeting, we reviewed the twenty-two, twenty-three city, uh, finances and the plan and for compliance. The auditors come in and comply. We did not have anything to do with the twenty-four budget. This had nothing to do with it. And we were in total compliance. We met all the goals. We, uh, were continuing to contribute to the reserves. The auditors gave a very high grading on it, but it had nothing to do with the upcoming budget. So that's not really correct information to be handing out. We discussed the upcoming budget during our budget workshops. So the people should know we had workshops, and they generally lasted several hours. There are working groups. We don't vote, they're formal votes. There's no formal votes. We don't, we go through every line item. The staff members all presented everything in very factual, easy-to-read thing. We discuss things, but it's a work group environment. It's not a voting environment. To vote, we would have to actually call a meeting and vote on that. We're, tonight we're having a public hearings, and that's the idea. And I want people to realize what they have to say is very important. We work for the public. The chain of commands, the public, then us, and this administration. And I love hearing from the public, because then we get a full insight as to what's going on in the community, what the public wants, what they don't want. It really helps in a decision-making. So I'd still like to see, myself, my opinion, I'd wanted to see the tax rate per thousand stay flat to saying the counties actually reduce thirst for this coming year. I was hoping we could do something similar. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Does anyone sign up to speak?
No.
Would anyone like to speak during the public hearing in reference to the budget? Okay. Motion to end the public hearing. Mr. McGinnis? Seconded by, Mr. Briggs? Call the row, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Viakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Okay, the second public hearing is for the, uh, water meter fees and new water rates. Can I have a motion to open that public hearing? Mr. Twitchell? Seconded by, Mr. Guy? Call the row, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Viakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Anyone sign up to speak?
Frank Luns?
Just, just so you know, if you could keep your comments to the water rates, that's the important part of the public hearing.
I'm Franklin Luntz, and I live in Stafford. I have a couple rentals here in the city. And, uh, the one rental that I'm working at, I get a quarterly bill here for thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. I'm not using any water at all. The other problem I have is the apartments that I do have. The meter readings, okay? The water usage is metered. The sewer usage is metered. Now how does that work with the same meter?
We can, we'll get an explanation for you. I mean, not during this hearing, but we can, we can set, have somebody talk to you on the side.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of my questions.
Yeah, it's an formula, and we'll explain it to you.
This, this rate is going up just, what, two cents or something?
That's the, that's the tax rate.
Yeah. It's like, okay, if nobody's here to speak on that, it's, it's very easy to get, you know, two cents, okay? What happens the next time? It's like, you know, we went through that. We didn't have any complaints. Not a lot of people were really interested. Let's make it a nipple, or, you know, that's something we can go back to all the time. And it's like, if people don't come out and speak about it, nothing changes. Everybody just fat, dumb, and happy. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, just as a rule, I, I don't know how other council members feel, but if I could have a zero budget or a zero tax rate, we would. Uh, but we, we look at our core services and we look at the expenses to maintain those services, and then we come up with a tax levy based on our other incomes and our other grants and our other, uh, you know, sources of revenue, and we do the best we can. There has been some years where, for example, when the nursing home became on the tax rolls, we, we lowered taxes that year because that made a big difference in our tax levy. So we, we try to keep it as low as possible based on the need. So it's not just two cents. Last year it was zero, and the year before that, I believe it was zero. And then now we've just, we can't maintain that with all the increases. We just, we just can't maintain it. So we have to do something, and I, I'm not for laying off any police or firemen or public works people at this point. We're, we're at bare bones as it is. So this is where I stand at.
That's right, I agree.
And we as council persons, we live here in the city, and most of us are on fixed incomes.
Yeah.
So.
And own our own houses and have to pay taxes.
Yeah.
So it affects us directly. The key thing, as low as possible. We're in this altogether, so to speak, and, and I don't want a high tax rate either. So I, I, I do my best to make sure that we can keep it as low as possible. And, and this year, there's just no way around it. We're at, we're a healthy budget, but, uh, we're not extravagant either. So that's just my thought on it. Anyone else wanna add into that one?
I agree with you.
Okay. Motion to close. Is there anybody else? I'm sorry. Is there a motion to close the, uh, public hearing? Mr. Viakowski? Seconded by, Mr. Richmond? Call the row, please.
Councilmember Viakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, city historian, Ryan Duffy.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm excited to present the appointment of Ryan Duffy to the historian's position. He has been the executive director of the Holland Land Office Museum since twenty seventeen. His, that position actually brought him to Batavia. Since then, he's been an integral part of history in Batavia and Genesee County to the residents and thousands of visitors who visit the Holland Land Office Museum. He's completed many different research projects related to our local history. He's published articles, one of which was on the Richmond Mansion, published in Western New York Heritage Magazine, and I think he'll make a wonderful city historian for our city.
Any questions or concerns on that?
I'm excited.
So we need consensus to move that to the business meeting?
Yes.
Gee, that gets moved? Budget ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I'll just highlight a few high-level items as we've been through the budget book extensively. The fiscal year begins on April first, twenty twenty-four. The budget property tax levy does not exceed the two percent tax cap. The average homeowner with a hundred thousand dollar home will pay eight ninety-six in city taxes. Again, city taxes only, not your full tax bill, not your school and county. Um, that would be two dollars higher than you paid last year. And again, these are all estimates till the final rules and estimates are set with the county and billing. Um, and the total budget overall with all funds, including water, sewer, healthcare, mall, general fund, and workers' comp, is thirty-seven million. We talked about the increases being mostly related to investments we're making out of reserve funds. So our operational spending isn't going up extravagantly. In fact, we tried to keep it, keep it as flat as possible, but we do have projects that we've requested from council to use reserve funds to undertake. I can go into more details or?
Well, it's, it's pretty specific. The memo covers pretty much everything in detail.
Discuss from here.
And, you know, before I forget, can we have someone at least get this gentleman's name and stuff so we can kind of pick him back and answer his questions off the?
Absolutely.
Other meeting. I didn't want to leave him stranded there for that. Um, so anyone else need more clarification on this? I mean, it's been, it's pretty much detailed out here. So, um, I mean, we're, we're, this is the predicament we're in, and this is what we've come up with. Is there anything, anyone who would like to add at this point? Okay, so, uh, our main consensus is that's move that to the business meeting? That gets moved? The, uh, water rate, local law?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just to go over again, highlights, um, same fiscal year begins April first, twenty twenty-four. Total water fund budget is six point six million. As a reminder to our citizens and taxpayers, we have a water plant and we have water distribution here in the city. This is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from last year, mainly due to increases in price of chemicals, inflation, and again, those capital purchases we're using reserves for. The rate would be set at six forty-six per thousand gallons, which is an increase of nineteen cents per thousand gallons. The meter fee will go up eight dollars annually. We discussed at length the need to replace thirty-three hundred meters, Tom? Four thousand meters. Four thousand meters. Unfortunately, we were not awarded a grant the second time in a row. Buffalo and Rochester received a grant for their water meters. We did not receive it, so we do have to continue to replace them between fifteen and thirty per year. Hopefully, in the next thirty years, we'll get through all of our water meter replacement, but we will still continue to seek grants. And then the capital improvement fee is a larger increase of twenty-four dollars annually. Um, that increase is to start to work towards a solution on replacing lead lines throughout the city, which is mandated by the federal government. So again, I understand that water is something that we all need, um, and we don't wanna pay any more than we have to for it, but we have massive infrastructure projects and massive mandates staring at us that we need to address, and I find it fiscally responsible to do so with small incremental increases instead of one large one at the time we need to pay for those lead line service replacements.
So this, to remind everyone, on this memo, there is, uh, needed improvements and needed infrastructure and estimated cost. And there's one, two, three, four, four, five major projects here from Maple and, uh, Mill Street to the wastewater tran, treatment plant, lead service lines, water meters, and the cohasting water line. So these are looming projects coming down the pipe. So it pays to keep our, um, reserves in, in good, healthy balances so that we can pay for these and, and have to bond less. We can pay cash for this stuff, or at least pay down the bond so we don't have to bond as much. So we've saved a lot of money by doing that and being responsible over the years. So this is another case of, of that. Um, any questions or concerns or any problems?
Are all the meters now, can they all be read remotely?
No. Four thousand cannot.
How many?
Four thousand cannot.
What percentage?
Fifty-eight hundred total meters in the city.
So what, in the next two years, you think they'll all be replaced?
Not unless we get a grant to do so. We don't have the funds to do that.
I know, it's a big savings having people go and knock on doors and read meters.
Sure is.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll keep looking for funding.
Anything else? So we need consensus to move that to the business meeting for both? That gets moved? Annual resolutions?
Yep. First up, uh, thank you, Council President, is the investment policy. There's no changes to the policy this year. This is an annual approval item for council. Make sure you've read through the policy and understand it. Um, but again, we have no changes to that policy for this year.
Well, we still have to do a resolution, re-accepting it as a policy every year. Okay, any questions or concerns on that one? So we need consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved? Parking permits?
Annually, the city transfers dumpster permit revenue and parking permit revenue received throughout the year into reserves, and this year we'd like to transfer that revenue of sixty-two hundred dollars. And it, I'm sorry, it goes into the parking lot capital reserve fund.
Right. Any questions or concerns on that? We need consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved? And the purchasing?
Um, there's one more employee accrued liability.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, sorry, there's a memo and, with two on here. Again, an annual resolution. Uh, we use the accrued liability reserve to cover the payout to employees, one-time payouts of retirements. This year, we need to cover a payout of seven thousand, one hundred, ten dollars and thirty-one cents. So we're asking for permission to use the accrued liability reserve to make that payment.
Any questions or concerns on that? We need consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved? And the purchasing?
Yes, the city's purchasing manual is required to be reviewed annually and adopted by city council. The only updates to the purchasing manual is a new link from the Department of Labor and the list of individual staff members responsible for purchasing.
Any questions or concerns?
So no substantial changes.
Okay, we need consensus to move the purchasing manual to the business. See, that gets moved? Surplus of police equipment for disposal?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city police department would like to declare six vehicles and ammunition as surplus, and Chief can give you the details.
Thank you, Council President. Thanks, Rachel. So you have two, uh, resolutions in front of you. I've broken out the vehicles and ammunition in two different resolutions for you. The first one is for the vehicle. In total, six, uh, fleet vehicles are being surplus. Uh, as you can see, we have a two thousand nine Chrysler Town Country with sixty-three thousand, one hundred, forty-six miles on it. Probably more than that, because that mileage was taken a while ago. Uh, two thousand and ten Chevy Impala with over thirty-five thousand, a two thousand and ten Chevy Impala with over ninety-nine thousand, a two thousand and ten Chevy Impala with over fifty-nine thousand miles, a two thousand and twelve Ford Escape with over fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred miles, which is no longer serviceable because it has a rotten frame, as well as a twenty-twenty police intercept utility, which was a K nine vehicle that was, uh, involved in a collision. The insurance company has deemed it a total loss. Therefore, we are surplusing it to two weekends south of it. Those vehicles have either been replaced or are in replacement process now. We would auction them off to the highest bidder. The second one is for ammunition. Um, as part of the changeover to the nine-millimeter, uh, platform, we are surplusing all of our forty caliber ammunition as well as our twelve-gauge ammunition. We will no longer be carrying a twelve-gauge shotgun anymore.
So are you gonna get, like, comparable nine in replacement? Are you just gonna sell it and get cash or credit or?
No, yeah, we're trading it into the company to get comparable nine.
Okay, that's right.
And then you'll see a future surplus for the shotguns as soon as we figure out the best way to get rid of them.
I'm sorry, did you say you were turning the ammo in?
That's correct. Trading it.
And I had a question. When these older vehicles, like the one with the K-9, when they get totaled up, do we get anything, any amount of money for them?
Yeah, so there's insurance that is, Eric wants to speak to that, the insurance company.
Sure. Well, in the case of the K-9 vehicle, which was deemed a loss by our insurance carrier, we get replacement value for a new vehicle. Typically, it's close to what we pay, but those vehicles need so much, you know, upgrades to them, especially the K-9 vehicle, that it's close. This time, I think we're pretty close to getting full value on that. Yeah, so typically, we will.
We push pretty hard to get full value.
It's not, it's not, it's not an easy process. A lot of back and forth.
And this is a specialty unit, so as you can imagine, there was a lot of specialty equipment in it that had to be replaced as well. So, we did go back and forth with the insurance company to make sure that as much of it was covered as possible. Obviously, the vehicle depreciates, and we drive it off a lot, so we're dealing with that as well.
I would send a dog in to negotiate.
He drives it. He doesn't like to talk too much.
So are we in consensus, any other questions? So are we in consensus to move those two surplus items to the business meeting?
Yes.
Should those get moved? Stop getting the iPhones?
Yes, the city was awarded $12,500 in additional funding from Genesee County, and the chief can explain what they'll be doing with those funds.
Yep, so this is a matter of bookkeeping. Again, we received $12,550 in additional funds for the purchase of a Roadster two-seat pedal car system. I don't know if you guys remember seeing that at our night out event. We have a system that is very popular when we go out to different types of community policing jobs. So we actually purchased a second one this year using this fund, so there's space for that, as well as the closed trailer, the graphics, and any other accessories that go with that. So we will have those available. Since it is funded by Stop V R I, they do go out to other school jurisdictions within the county, and again, very popular, very, in high demand during the summer months a lot.
No questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved. Homeland Security Grant?
Yes, the city was awarded $4,232 from the New York State Division of Homeland Security. Chief?
Thank you. So this, again, is for the, what they call the Red Team exercise. So basically, it is a emergency services exercise to test and evaluate the effectiveness of New York State Suspicious Activity Reporting Program. And it enhances our relationship between law enforcement and the private sector, businesses, and general public. So this is overtime money that was paid for detail for the officers to assist the state police going around to different businesses and testing their see-something, say-something, basically, protocol that the state has. And it's always very successful. I don't know if there's any details came out of that, Chris? Any differences you got?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for both? That gets moved. Assistance firefighter grant?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city has been successful in receiving assistance to firefighter grants in the past. We'd like to apply for another grant this year. I believe the chief will explain. We've been super successful in receiving funds for turnout gear, which can be up to eight grand per set or more. If you get the boots with the fur. And, sorry, I had to. But we also do, are able to do a lot of training and offset. I had to lighten the mood. But, yeah, we've been very successful with that. We've also, in the fire department BOM maintenance project upgrades, received $45,000 from the same grant for the sprinkler system and fire alarms, which we did not have at the fire station. So, chief, anything else you want to add?
Well, as the city manager said, you know, we've been very successful since 2017. We've got over $400,000 in grant funding through this. Big one being the turnout gear, which is also exponentially rising in price. And then, this actually is paid for several weeks.
Great. Any questions? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Healthcare worker bonus?
Thank you, Council President. The state legislature allocated $1.2 billion in funding to New York State Healthcare Worker Bonus Program for the payment of bonuses to frontline healthcare workers during COVID. So those that served in a healthcare capacity on the frontlines during COVID were eligible. City fire qualified for the payment and was paid and has remitted the payment to the firefighters. So there's no impact to the city budget. We just need an amendment to the budget as presented in the resolution.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved. Pro housing community?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city qualifies currently as a pro housing community under the metrics that the governor has set out because of the increases in housing we have had here in the city. The program, as we understand it, and we were at conferences earlier in the year, is now required cities to sign up to continue to be eligible for certain grant programs, including the DRI, New York Forward, Main Street Grants, as well as a $650 million pot of funds that can help developers in brownfield opportunity areas and other housing sites. Eric and I have been talking about this for the past three months, thinking of the best way to present it, to get all the information. The fact that we do qualify now, administratively, we could have signed up, but we feel it's a policy decision that needs to be brought to city council for their examination and their determination. The entry into the program is, can be done two ways. One, because we already qualify just through a letter of intent, which we recommend to council. The other is passing a resolution. We've looked back on all the housing studies we've had done in the last few years, and we currently have a new housing study going on at the county level, and we severely lack in market rate housing in our community. We don't have places for our kids who go off to college to come back with their degrees and live here. We don't have places for seniors to be able to age, and I won't say in place, but age in this community where you have lower maintenance, but maybe a higher-end apartment, maybe a downtown apartment. So with everything we've identified, we think it'd be prudent for the city to become a pro housing community.
Rachel, would it be fair to say that when we're looking, we're looking at the housing growth for the city, we're looking for communities similar to us, not Buffalo, not Rochester, not New York City?
Yep, we're looking at Canandaigua, we're looking at Geneva, we're looking at their best practices. We're looking at how they did it, and we're also looking at these studies that you have and the sites that Tammy provided, this beautiful tactic. Thank you, Tammy. Where we feel that housing development could occur in various forms. Not all housing is going to be five stories. Some housing could be small condos, patio homes. You know, you really want your densest housing in your downtown, and as you move out from your downtown, then you're going to see smaller multifamilies, patio living, teeny homes, condos, things like that, until you get to the outskirts of the city where you have larger quarter-acre lots and things of that nature. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes. Do you think, one, does this, if we participate, does this bind us to anything?
It does not.
The other thing, a friend of mine is a contractor, called me last week, and he encouraged, he said, "To go look at the newest Habitat house they've just completed." And he said, "It's a perfect model for affordable housing," because he helped do some things on it. He says, "You're not going to get anything more affordable than that."
Well, homeownership is definitely part of the program we're looking at. Eric's done a lot of work. We have the G C E D C Tona Batavia Home Fund Partnership. So, re-advertize to everyone in the public, we have funds available to make improvements to your homes. Call Eric. He's available 24/7. We'll give you a cell phone. We absolutely want homeowners to understand there are funds out there so you can help improve single-family homes. We also were just awarded the grant.
CBDG Home Fund Grant, which is going to allow us to select 20 homes in the city using certified contractors that we've vetted to do improvements on our homes. So that was a grant that we applied for and received last summer that will be rolling out within the next, I would say, probably to completion date, maybe about two months till we get that all paperwork and everything set up through the state to award those, those projects. In addition, you have information in your packet of the new study that was done by the developer that demonstrates the need for a wide variety of different homes and different types of homes and what they're, what they're looking for in the city in the next 15 to 20 years. So I would encourage you to look at that as well. This is, Bob, to your point, this is not binding, but however, it is required. And that was a change that took place on the state level with this latest round of budget talks. At one time, it was, it was preferred that you do this, and you might get more points on your application. That's changed, and it is now required. So, we would not be allowed to go for any of these funds if we are not deemed a pro housing community. Our grant administrator, grant administrator did a fantastic job working with the codes department to get, to get our numbers to where we feel they're accurate, and they are above 1.5% for the past four years. From 2018 to 2022, we don't have 2023 data yet. We're not required to have 2023 data yet. But it puts us at that, at that point that we have shown growth in the city to become a pro housing community. So there's two things in front of you. One is a resolution to become a pro housing community, and the second one is a memo resolution from Julie Daly, our grants administrator, to you guys, that basically appoints the assistant city manager, not me, but my position, as our pro housing officer for the city. Basically, any of the contact persons that's going to go through, that's going to be myself or whoever sits in my position.
And one thing I'd like to point out in the memo, most important part of the memo in my mind was this one sentence. Municipalities retain the right to develop per their zoning code, market need, and private sector developers' interests. In other words, if you recall, the governor tried to play some games with the zoning a while back. That's important to local communities to retain their own zoning authorities. So, that's important there. And homeowners can continue to access the rehabilitation funding through the Batavia Home Fund and soon be available through the CBDG block grant. So those are important things as far as maintaining our own city identity. And, you know, and I always, I have to bring this up because whenever someone tries to win an argument with me, they always go, "Well, they said..." And when I ask them who "they" was, then they all get angry at me because, like, it doesn't exist. So I don't know who "they" are that keep referring to Batavia as Buffalo and Rochester. I've lived here 67 years of my life now, and not once have I ever heard anybody that I know or care about say, "Yeah, we're just like Buffalo. We're just like Rochester." I mean, it just doesn't get talked about. We're like a smaller city, and we're in very rural area. Agriculture is the county's biggest industry. And so I've never considered, I mean, maybe on Geneva, maybe Leroy a little bit, but I don't ever recall us being... So I don't know where that's coming from. I certainly don't look at Buffalo, Rochester and try to make decisions based on Batavia. I certainly don't do that. So we're our own unique city. We have our own people that live here. I listen to those people and try to make what they want to have happen. And that's, you know, you can only do so much. You can't please everybody, but I do the best. So, and I know my fellow council.
And Mr. President?
What?
We should be thankful with the present crime rate.
That we're out of Buffalo. I mean, the only time I ever heard of that is when we had an incident and someone on Facebook gets all negative, and, you know, they tend to do that, and then they say, "We're getting worse than Buffalo. We're getting worse than wherever. Fill in the city there." But not in a positive way. So, I'm glad we're Batavia. I'm glad we're small. I'm glad we are what we are. And that's why I live here, and that's why my family lives here. So I just wanted to say that, you know, because it's been bouncing around the whole night. Okay, so is there any questions on the healthcare worker bonus, or excuse me, the pro housing community or the pro housing officer appointment? So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, those two items both get moved. Water source protection program?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As we've discussed multiple times, our source of water, our main source of water and the healthiest source of water we have to deliver water to citizens is the aquifer. It directly feeds the water treatment plant and as well as the Tonawanda Creek does. These water sources need to be protected, and the DEC is offering to work with ourselves in the county and our partners at the Department of Health on a, on a source water protection program. So what they do is provide technical assistance. We'd give them our hydrological studies of the aquifer, all that information. We'd sit on committees and talk about different scenarios of what the major threats to that source of water is now. And even as we move forward with the county, which I hope to bring them in in the summer to present their Phase 3 water project to you, which would in turn potentially see the decommissioning of our plant, I still feel like the aquifer is a body of water that needs to be protected for the city and for the county. It is used by manufacturers for their non-contact cooling water, and we'd like to move forward with this program. Brett, do you have anything to add?
Just two things real quick. This is a voluntary program. There's no out-of-pocket cost participating municipalities for developing their drinking water source protection program. And secondly, you can opt out of the program. If, in a rare instance, municipality wants to opt out, they're just required to notify the state right into its decision to end their participation in the program. Within 30 days of the notification, municipalities will be required to set up a meeting for all municipal staff that participated in the program to discuss what the state and the consultant would need to opt out. So, no cost. We can opt out if we need. So.
Great. Any questions? So are we in consensus to move the water source protection program to the business meeting? That gets moved. We have water plant project?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As council has heard, we have multiple different projects going on at the water treatment plant, including the precipitator, the wells, and other items. The city, in the beginning of setting out when Brett and I were brand-new, had said that the brick and mortar costs to the improvements would be bore by the city. After we looked into the contract, we realized that the county is actually responsible for those costs. So we came to a resolution agreement of each paying 50% of the brick and mortar cost of improvements at the water plant. I think it's a good solution, but it's not precedent-setting, and we will not be paying for any brick and mortar costs in the future at the water plant.
Charlie, if you want to weigh in on that, that's, we live with that by doing this for a one-time thing?
Yeah, I mean, basically, there were some misunderstandings, shall we say, as to how certain things are previewed based on discussions that were recently had between city management and staff with county reps. I think there's been some things there.
Okay. Any questions from council? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. Surplus equipment bureau maintenance?
Yes, we have a resolution before you require, requesting surplus declaration of property for two track loaders, and I'll let Brad or Scotty talk about that.
Absolutely. So what we're looking to seek permission to do is to surplus two 2019 Gallus track loaders. One is an RT 105, and one is an RT 165. We're looking to surplus these two loaders in order to purchase a new Bobcat loader. I'll let Scotty kind of talk about the specifics why we're looking to get rid of two and replace it with one. So I'll share that over to Scotty.
Evening, Council. I guess we go over it with one record. This is RT 105. It's a very small machine. Purchased primarily for downtown snow removal, homeless, other things, and it is deemed itself to be not very useful. Very underpowered. It has very low hour times, and we cannot use it. So we would like to surplus these two machines to purchase a brand-new Bobcat skip loader, which we do use citywide across departments daily. The trade in value on the two machines is high enough that we're able to trade those in for $21,000 dollars to acquire the brand-new Bobcat.
Great. So this will be more universally used instead of just on Main Street sidewalks? Will be able to use it all in the city? able to use it all over the city in many roles, all winter, all summer, all whenever.
Correct. Multiple attachments that, from stump branding to V plows to snowboards.
Right.
Yeah, the small loader is a glorified wheelbarrow at this point, so we're gonna replace that, and like Scotty says, twenty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars. We have the funds within this year's budget to do so, based on the repair that came in, thirty-six thousand dollars under, that will cover the cost of.
So, that we know it's not gonna affect next year's budget.
It does not have a negative impact.
Be able to do it, it won't affect this year's budget really.
Correct.
Great, that's even better. Any other questions from council? Okay, we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved. Austin Park Grant?
Yes, thank you, Council President. City was made aware that we did receive a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for improvements at Austin Park. We had to work with New York State Parks and Recs to ensure that the easement didn't go over the entirety of the property, which included the parking lot and the Brisbane Mansion. We've got confirmation it does not, it's only the parkland, and we're confident to recommend the acceptance of this grant tonight.
Any questions? Okay, we in consensus to move that to the business? L E D streetlight?
Yes, my favorite project ever.
It turned out to be really nice.
I know. I gotta find a new favorite project. So, we need the authorization to borrow for the L E D streetlight. We discussed this extensively during our budget talks, where you saw that the operations budget for streetlights was decreased, so we could make bond payments on the borrowing. So, this is the authorization to borrow one point seven million dollars for long-term financing of the L E D streetlights.
Any questions or comments? So, are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Okay, that gets moved.
I make a motion that. Whereas Article Seven, Section one oh five, Sub-Paragraph one and F of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into an executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia, that upon the approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into an executive session.
Question? Tom Rosen?
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Skye?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.